A meeting in the Willis City Council ordered for April 8th. Will you all rise and hold on? Could you lead us in the pledge?
I would like to follow me or come with me. My pledge is that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, let's see who's here.
Okay. Councilmember Stransky.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Madalena.
Here.
I'm here.
Here. The first item we need to do this evening is we need to amend our agenda. I'd like to ask for some support. The added item is a settlement agreement relating to litigation concerning an agreement by and between the city of Willets and the Brooktrails Township Community Services District for the disposal of wastewater from Brooktrails into the city's wastewater treatment plant and disposal facilities for the service at the wastewater treatment plant. So I'd like to move that, ask that to be put on the consent calendar. And I hear a motion to that effect. Is there a second?
Yes, I so moved.
Oh, second?
Anybody in the community like to hear anything about that?
Can we have a copy?
Yes. Yes, I'm sure there's one available, though I don't have one, but I've seen enough as I please. So is that one?
The final, final?
We actually, I have a signed, fully executed one in my office that I can make a copy of.
Okay. So seeing no public interest to have a motion and a second, and by, if we do pass, add this, well, then it'll be to the agenda, so I don't want to prejudge it, but vote, call vote.
Yes. Councilmember Stransky.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Madalena.
Yes.
Hornstein.
Yes.
Yes. So that will come up under the consent agenda. Public communications, the city council welcomes participation in its meetings. These are for items not on the agenda. No action will be taken. Try and limit your comments to three or four minutes. And do we have any? Sir, who are you?
I, in my advanced age, forget sometimes. I'm Alan Valeri, a citizen of the greater metropolitan Willets area, and I know this item is coming up on the agenda under a consent. I just want to congratulate the council on an amazingly difficult agreement with Brooktrails. And I just want to say that even though there's political boundaries that sometimes make us end up on different ends of things or different sides, in the end, we're all, we're kind of all together. And I used to live in Brooktrails and didn't feel like I was outside of Willets, I always felt part of Willets. So, you know, I think we need to work together on these things, and I congratulate the council on working this out without, I know it's a long protracted and very difficult case, but you found a way to get through it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Any other public communication this evening? Items not on the agenda? Yeah, Greta.
Hi, I'm Greta Connie. I am a citizen of Willets and a business owner, and I just wanted to, again, reiterate what Alan said. Thank you for resolving that problem. And I also wanted to say there is an item coming up tonight, the Rails With Trails. I'm very much in support of it. I think it's a great opportunity for our community, and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be talking about that in a little bit.
Next.
Maybe even sooner. Second, third, and last call, seeing none, we will move then on to public matters. And lo and behold, a discussion and direction to staff regarding a proposed bike and trail project and the submission of an application to Caltrans for an active transportation program cycle two funding. Turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you.
Maybe she's going to turn it over to.
Well, you'll notice that the title doesn't have rails and trails, or rails in it, because it wasn't quite clear on it, is it rails to trails?
With.
Rails with trails.
Rails with or rails in.
Rails and trails. I've seen all of those. But we have an opportunity to submit a grant application for a Caltrans, one of their funding mechanisms, active transportation program.
Those are the ones that hold up.
For a rails to trails, with trails project. And IMCOG has been very supportive of the city pursuing these grant opportunities because, as we all know, we have limited resources, and so anytime we can acquire some grant things, it helps us further our efforts. City staff went down recently and met with IMCOG staff to talk about this particular program and really get a grasp on the nuts and bolts of, you know, what it requires, what the application process is, you know, getting the application done, and, you know, there's engineering involved in it, and we need to have a project area that's designated. Fortunately, the city has an adopted bicycle and pedestrian plan from 2009 that we can essentially dust off and use. But during our discussion with IMCOG staff, we discussed the possibility of expanding the project area, which originally was from the high school down to basically the new hospital area. And expanding it to include a westward offshoot that would be along the Walnut Avenue railroad line going towards Blosser Lane School. And doing so would enhance the safety for students in particular walking to and from school. So there was some consensus at that meeting that, yes, we should, we should include this expanded area, but this project, because you're involving the railroad and, in fact, two different rail agencies, we need to have some discussions with them and get some agreements from them about, you know, the right, because these are in rightaways, railroad rightaways, easements or access licenses, things of that nature. There's crossings to deal with and bridges and, you know, some pretty complicated issues. And with crossings, you have to get the, I don't know what the proper term is, the crossing signals. And there's a high cost to those. So all of these things could be factored into the grant request. So before we proceed any further down this path, we really need to know from the council if you support us pursuing this grant opportunity. This initial one would be for, essentially for planning purposes, but we need to consider the full-blown project. And as your city manager, I would request that if you support this project, that you let staff know where this fits into the council's goals, because, you know, as we recently talked about in our workshop, we do have limited resources. So we want to be very clear going into this of what resources are needed to make this happen, because we can certainly write into the grant application outside resources that we would contract for. So Phil Dow from IMCOG is here to talk about the ATP program and perhaps some of his thoughts on this particular project. Alan is here to also give some comments and, as well as some historical information. But essentially, you have three options tonight. One is to give direction to staff to pursue this grant to include the expanded project area, and if we do that, we would have to conduct some community forums, because it is expanded from the previous bike and pedestrian plan that was adopted. The second option would be to just stick with the original project area, and the third option would be not to approve or pursue the grant opportunity. So with that, Alan, maybe you might want to come up first and get some information.
Thank you for the opportunity to get up in front of the council one more time. As the city planner once upon a time, we worked on a number of plans, and I know one of the things that people really dislike is, and I've heard it a lot of times, is doing another plan that sits on a shelf. And unfortunately, a lot of them do that. But I think Phil will tell you that sometimes it's really great to have a plan done that's on a shelf, because when a funding opportunity comes along, it requires that plan to be done. And so over the years, we've worked on several plans here at the city that your council helped with and worked on and either adopted or accepted. One was this bike and pedestrian specific plan that Adrian talked about, and the bike and pedestrian specific plan looked at walking and bicycle trails all over town and looked at several options and priorities and funding mechanisms and that sort of thing. And so we have a plan for this city that shows some routes of different scales of bike and pedestrian plans. More recently, we participated along with IMCOG, that IMCOG produced this Rails With Trails Plan. And with is an important word here, because Rails Two Trails is another program that actually converts a rail line to, to a trail. The rail line is abandoned, it's no longer used as a rail line, and you're converting it to a trail. In this case, we have a plan that says Rails With Trails, which means that the rail line is still considered active and the trail is alongside, within the railroad rightaway, and you have to work out agreements with the railroad to have this existing trail within their rightaway. And it's a complicated, working with the railroad is always an interesting and complicated thing, but the railroads went along with this plan, IMCOG produced the plan. I was the city's rep on the, on the plan, and we looked at options from the high school down to East Hill Road and came up with some recommendations for different segments, how to pursue different segments. It looked like it was going to be difficult to ever build the whole thing all at one time, but different segments could be built. And we had public meetings, and it was very well attended, the meetings were well attended, and the public was very vocal in supporting more active trails. And so we have, we have a Rails With Trails Plan that's for Willets, and it is for this general corridor of trails. As Adrian said, it did not include the western spur that would go out to Blosser Lane, and so there would be a need to vet that with the public. Another thing that was done a while back, when there was such thing as a redevelopment agency, we had to do a five-year redevelopment plan every five years. And one of the top priorities in that plan was a trail along the railroad. And as far, as long as I've been here, that's always been talked about as a, as an important idea for getting people back and forth without having to get on Main Street. And there's even talk about having little trolleys on the railroad and linking these trails. So here's an opportunity finally to actually put some of those plans into action. And Phil will get up and tell you about how the funding works and what can be done with this funding, and it's a pretty good sizable piece of funding that can do quite a bit for, to put this plan into action. So I think this is something the community has supported on and off different iterations for many years, and here's a chance to do something with it. It will take a lot of work. This is a pretty complicated, I think, grant application. We've got different people pledging to help with different pieces of it. IMCOG's going to be helping, I think, with quite a bit of it, and we've got community members that are really excited about helping out, so I think this is a great opportunity, and anything I can do to help, I'm happy to do so. So I think Phil would be.
Right, yeah, would like to hear from Phil. He's got the care to share some real information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, former, former, former staff, never goes away. My name's Phil Dow, Director of the Mendocino Council of Governments. I talked to your city manager earlier, and she thought it would be good if I kind of give you a little overview of what the funding source is, and I'll do that in just a minute, but I will again hold up the plan that we did, oh, three short years ago, seems like a year ago. And this is a Rails With Trails Plan for the entire county, along the entire northwestern Pacific railroad rightaway. This, if you look through here, you'll see that it even talks about going up into the Field River Canyon. I discouraged them to talk about that very much, but it is from, all the way from Sonoma County on up to Trinity. And there is a piece in here that shows a little bit of the Skunk Train rightaway that curves around back into Highway 101, right where the arch is right now. So that's the only piece that's addressed in this plan for the Skunk Train rightaway. It took some time, you know, the city of Ukiah was the first one to pursue this, and some of you know that a piece of it has been built in Ukiah, and it's not officially open yet, but it's being used quite a bit. And I'm expecting that the, it will be finalized and really open for use next month, is what I was told. But it took a couple of years and maybe more of working with the NCRRA and their operator in northwestern Pacific to get them to agree to the concept, number one, and then actually sign the, an agreement for this type of use. So it's just not, not something that railroads are used to doing, and as Alan pointed out, this type of program is often called the Rails Two Trails Program, particularly in the Midwest, in the South and the East, where they have railroads going everywhere that have been abandoned, that you use the rightway for these type of things. But in this case, there are plans to continue operation of the railroads, and so it's a Rails With Trails Plan. So this document here shows the possibilities through the entire county. It has more detail within the two communities that are most impacted by the railroad, in the Ukiah area and also in Willets. And so there's quite a bit of detailed information in here that could support a grant application that doesn't have to be generated anywhere else. So I want to talk a little bit about what this active transportation program is, and it is a mess. It's, what the state decided to do is to combine the Safe Routes to School Program, the state Safe Routes to School Program with the federal Safe Routes to School Program, the bicycle transportation account, the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is the federal program that almost replaces the T Program, and some safety money, and try to put it all on one application, with the idea is you apply, we'll come up with an application process, you apply for the funding, and then if we award the funding, we'll tell you what kind of money you get. So it's any of those programs, and in my opinion, some of them are a little overemphasizing the application. But overall, it's probably as good as it's going to get, and it is an opportunity to actually fund some of these projects that we have plans for, waiting for the funding opportunity to come up. I used to think it would be T money we'd be using for these kind of transportation enhancements, but that opportunity is not gone. So the active transportation program, the California Transportation Commission, on March 26, opened up the second cycle for these type of funds. I personally applied for funding for a project in Covelo in the, in the first cycle, and I locked myself in the office for two weeks and prepared the application, and that was when I had all of the planning documentation done from a planning project that we did up in Covelo. So this is going to be a good help, a good start, because you have all the stuff that needs to be put in the application regarding the narrative, the, the planning process that went behind it counts a lot in this particular program, and the, and documentation that the public was involved, that really is important. You can't get anywhere without that. You have that right here, it's all documented. So that, that's an important part, but it still takes a lot of time and effort to put something together. The first cycle, it required a, a match of the typical, easy to remember, 11.47 percent federal component. That's what, you had to come up with a match. They kind of rounded off to 12%, but that's what it really was. But there's a part of the program where they're trying to make sure that the disadvantaged communities in the state are recognized and get their fair share. So as it turns out, if you are in a disadvantaged community, you didn't have to have a match. And so our advantage in Mendocino County is that we're almost all in disadvantaged communities. And so only those people who want to put forward a project in the active transportation program from, you guessed it, the town of Mendocino, and Otter Valley, and, get this, Dos Rios. Those are the three only non-disadvantaged communities in the entire county. And so anywhere else that comes up with a grant that wants to apply, we don't have to come up with a match. That's a good deal, because we're disadvantaged. And this particular cycle, they decided that so many of them found a way to be disadvantaged that they're not even requiring a match this time. But for those that want to include your own money, from all that extra money you have, into an application, you get some points for leveraging, so there is an advantage for doing that. But, so it combines a number of programs, and so our advantage is you don't have to have a match. So if the project is $2 million, $3 million, those type of projects are fairly typical in this program. Don't be afraid of a large number. Don't think that you're going to have to limit it to half a million dollars or whatever. If we need to, if you're going to pursue it, you need to pick the project that makes the most sense for you, that you think you can handle, and apply for the funds and see what happens. And applying for these funds is, as I said, is, is a little bit onerous, but as I said, we have a lot of the background information through the previous years of planning efforts, not only what the city has done, but we did a few years ago as backup information. It still takes some time to put it in the format they need and, and all that. And we have our staff available too, where we think that we can do parts of the application quicker and better than anybody else, because we've already done it. And we have the access to a certain type of information you need for it. So we can help the, the program is, is, as I said, it's a combination of state and federal money. If the project is, is small enough, you're likely to get state-only funds and not have to go through the federal process, and that's another consideration you need to think about when you decide how large the project's going to be. Generally, the rule of thumb is that if you submit a project under the program and it's going to be under a million dollars, you're pretty likely to get state-only funds. But if it's a $5 million project, I'll guarantee you it's going to be federalized. They, they are trying to put the federal funds on the larger projects, which tend to be in the larger entities that are used to dealing with the federal procedures, and it's a tough process to deal with the federal procedures, especially if you're a small entity. So the process is that, and while you don't have much time, as I said, the cycle two opened up on March 26 and are due June 1. There's not a lot of time to waste if you decide to pursue something, but as I said, you have a base. You have an idea. We just have to see what's practical and what makes sense in pursuing at this time. The, the applications are due in June. I think the evaluation process goes on in July. They'll come out with a draft list in October, and I think that they are planning on approving the program either at their November or December meeting of the California Transportation Commission. So that in general is the timeframe. The plans are for, is for this to be an annual process, and I would think that if you want to pursue funding, and I don't want to discourage you from that by telling you there's more opportunities, but if you get, if we get to the point where pursuing something like a route along the Skunk Train route that has served the schools on the east, which is, be a great idea, what, you know, what a, what a length to improve the safety of the commuting kids and the opportunity to get back and forth. But you're getting kind of a late start in negotiating with an entirely different railroad that hasn't been through this process before. That might be right, probably in the sky right now, I don't know. And we also have to think about how we're going to do things like cross Highway 101 safely when, along near the railroad tracks. So there are some issues here that we need to talk about, that we'll talk about with staff and also with Caltrans, who we need to get them included. But that, I wanted to say that this is a competitive process, and it is scored by a group of volunteers from around the state that represent the interest of recreational bicyclists, as well as commuting bicyclists, pedestrian advocates, air quality advocates, as well as regular old engineers and, and, and city people and county people and Regional Transportation Planning Agency people. Last year, there were 40 people who were stupid enough to volunteer, and I was one of those. And the only reason I did it, as Alan's talking about his advanced age, I didn't do it for anybody except for us, because I wanted to find out what everybody else was doing, so I could make the applications better coming out of Mendocino County. And it kind of worked out. I, in reviewing the ones I reviewed, I learned a lot of things not to do, and I did find a few that were actually pretty good, that I got some pointers from about how to approach things. And I had one of my new staff, I had, I volunteered him to do it this year, so he would learn things too. So I wrote an application, and I was on the evaluation committee, and the application I wrote was successful in getting the grant money for, for Covelo in the statewide competition. Now, the way this thing works is, I hope I can remember the percentages right, out of the money that's available, and I can't tell you how many, I mean, $180 million or something in that range, it's available statewide, and 50% of it goes to a statewide competition, where you're competing, we're competing with the county of LA and Fresno and everywhere else in the state. And 10% is set aside for small urban and rural areas exclusively, and then the other 40% is set aside for the metropolitan planning organizations, the big cities in the state, the big areas. And so the way it works is that if you're, want to compete for the statewide funds, this is the deadline that's coming up now in, in June 1. And they're all looked at by the scoring committee and ranked, and the ones that score the highest are funded out of the statewide pot. And then the ones that happen to be rural applications, if you're not funded out of statewide pot, you drop down and you're funded out of that 10% that's left over. The best ones that are not, from the small urban and rurals are funded out of that 10%. If you don't make it there, you don't make it. We had, in Mendocino County, we had three out of the six applications that were submitted last year that were funded. The Covelo one, one that the county one, one that the County Health and Human Service Agency, the Public Health Department put together, which was more a non-infrastructure component for dealing with, with, uh, schools and safety and education for bicycle and pedestrian for schools, countywide. That was funded out of the statewide pot. The Covelo application was funded out of statewide pot. And then, a third application that Fort Bragg put in for Chestnut, uh, for their access to their school complexes up Chestnut was funded out of the small urban and rural part component. But, the MPO applications come after the statewide one, and they have their own process that's meant to prove. So, uh, I just wanna wrap up by saying, it, this is a, it's a, as Alan pointed out, it's a difficult application. We already have a lot of the information. It takes time to put it into terms that the, uh, application dictates it should be in. Uh, a lot of it is accident-based, and, uh, uh, there's a lot of points if you have pedestrian and bicycle accidents. I know you got a lot of pedestrians in this town, and you're sure bicyclists and, and, uh, in the fact that there's safety money involved, they want, that counts as far as, as improving your application by having a safety record. And the way you would approach a rail with trail program is, you look at what the parallel streets are and, and say, "Well, we're gonna preclude that hazard by moving this traffic on to the secure Class One facility that doesn't have those type of problems." So, all in all, uh, this program is still working out the canx, but, uh, it, we do have a good shot. Uh, as I said, you know, three of the ones that we put together out of Mendocino County, and I, and I, we did an in-house review of all of them, and, and two of them, uh, we wouldn't have funded. Uh, they weren't put together very well. And we're helping, we're helping those people now, uh, based on our experience, so.
Phil, would you, would you take some questions from council members here?
Yeah, you're trying to get rid of me, that's good. Yeah, I was, I was done anyway, I just...
I didn't catch you off, I thought. Does anybody have some questions?
Um, what do you think the odds would be that if we were successful, because this grant would be for planning purposes?
No.
Right?
No.
It would be designing a project?
No. We done, done the plan. We want, we want construction money.
So, this would, this would allow for construction?
Oh, yeah.
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 Great.
No, this, this, this plan, uh, this program is entirely for, uh, implementation, so we would include, uh, the environmental, any design that you would need, and probably no right-of-way would be needed, but that would be a component, as well as construction. So, we'd be going after the whole thing, actually doing something.
Wonderful, okay.
Is this, is this the funding that Yucaya used to build their project?
Yes and no. Uh, they, they got their first phase, uh, through the bicycle transportation, uh, account funding, which was one of those programs that got folded into this ATP. So, now they're going, now they're in the process of applying for the next phase down, uh, further to south in town. That's gonna be their next phase if they're applying for it. Now, they have to apply through the Active Transportation Program.
How wide of trail does it make? Is it variable?
You, you decide. Uh, usually, usually for, for two-way traffic, if you're going to have both bicycle and, and pedestrians share this, which I'm assuming you're going to, uh, it's gonna, it needs to be ten feet, 'cause it needs to meet the Caltrans standard for two-way type trails.
Does that end up being a paved?
Yes.
Surface?
Yes.
Not a rocky surface?
No.
And the state money versus federal money, does that have to do with the environmental that would be required?
Most definitely.
Yes, okay. We have no experience with that.
Well, one of the things you do when you put in the application is you, uh, request through Caltrans state-only funds. Uh, you do that right up front if you, if you want it. And, you know, if you're gonna have a five million dollar project, you won't have any success, as I said before. But the smaller ones, you, you, you probably have a good chance of getting state-only.
And what do you think, just like your professional opinion, I'm gonna ask staff this also, knowing what we have to work with and knowing your willingness to help, what do you think would be a time estimate as far as, I mean, you put together the application for the Covelo one. I mean, how much time do you think we're talking about for an application like this?
Well, the deadline is June first.
The deadline is June?
You're asking how much staff effort?
Yeah, and just a wild guess. I mean, I, I'm not gonna hold you at this.
No. I'd, I'd say forty to sixty hours. Uh, and probably the most critical part is that, uh, a new requirement that wasn't required last year is that we have to have, and I just found out about it yesterday, 'cause I didn't believe it and actually, I missed it, since in the changes, is you have to have a, an engineer sign off on the entire application. And, uh, because they're treat, they're saying that the application is a substitute for a project study report, and the project study report is something that engineers have to sign off on. So, your application is, in fact, a substitute PSR. Therefore, a civil engineer must sign the document. And of course, uh, your, your, uh, city engineer needs to be putting together the, the estimate to begin with, the, a detailed engineer's estimate of the cost. But, it goes beyond that. They're also making the engineer stamp the thing, saying that he has read the document, and it, and the document actually makes sense towards implementing the physical activity that the engineer said we're going to do. So, uh, that means I have to go hunting for a civil engineer to, uh, to sign off on mine too.
And do you think that time of estimate would account for expanding it to Blosser? I mean, that is, or towards Blosser, at least to Bechtel? It seems like that would be such a good idea.
Well, I'm looking at the time constraint you have now.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. And, and when we, you know, when we talked about it with staff initially, looking at the benefits that would accrue as far as improving the safety, to access to the two schools out there, it's a great idea. Uh, we'll have to look and see if there's enough time to do the planning necessary to, uh, to take it out there. Uh, if not, as I said, there's gonna be succeeding cycles of this. And, and, uh, you know, another, there's two theories. Either go big and try to get everything done at once, or pick up something you know you can handle and try to have some success and then try to build from there. So...
Ron, you got a question?
All right, so this is a reimbursement grant.
Yes.
Which means that we have to, uh, spend the money or commit the money before we can apply for reimbursement?
You don't have to commit the money. You just have to say you're, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're going to award you, either award what you say you want, or they're not going to. And then, when it comes down to going through your normal competitive bidding process, uh, you will be on hu- on the hook to pay the contractors first and get reimbursed. But, the normal Caltrans thing usually takes thirty to forty-five days. It's not like a major thing.
So, that, that was my, my question, uh, the, the actual spending of funds. We would receive the funds thirty to forty-five days af- after we apply for reimbursement. Is that what you said?
Yes.
And we can apply for reimbursement only after we've actually spent the money?
Yes.
Um, can, because this would be a construction grant, can we stage it? You know, uh, bill and pay as we go along?
Well, you're gonna be awarded whatever you say you, the complete limits of the project.
Right.
Uh, I suppose you could structure your con- your actual construction project to do, your actual, uh, bid process to say that. You, you could also perhaps borrow the money from somebody else.
I think we could probably nick that part out. And Madge?
Um, so, on the, um, portion of the project that's already included in the plan, we'd still have to, um, part of the grant that we would ask for includes a sequel review. Is that right? Because we don't think that's been done yet.
Well, let's hope it's sequen- I, I mean...
If it's state-funded, yeah.
Yeah, you, you're, you're...
But then, okay, then on the other, uh, project, if we decided to pursue it, A, well, two questions. One is, should that be identified as two parallel projects as opposed to one big project? And secondly, um, we would have to start after June first to have public input, because there's not enough time to do it before. And that, that hasn't gone through that public review process yet.
Well, there might, you know, there, there could be time to do that.
Between now and June first?
Between, between now and the, and the time the application is, is done. Uh, you, you have roughly, you know, roughly three weeks in order to do it, I would say. Uh, it, but, I wouldn't say there's no time to do it, but it is critical to the application that the public process has, has been done.
Already happened.
Yeah, 'cause you need to document it.
Okay.
And, and for the main north-south route, you know, we have all that documented.
Yeah.
It says right in here that the first meeting we had on this, and remember, we had seventy people show up here.
So, we can't apply for it and then do the public? We have to, have done that before?
No.
Okay.
So, you know, that, that, that is a problem, I know, and that may be one reason why staff comes back at some time and say, "Well, we better just go with the north-south route at this time." But, but I'm hoping that we can talk about that more.
Is it a pretty sure thing that there will be another cycle next year? Is it, um, is it, is it if?
Well, the government's running it, so you tell me. Uh, they, they're planning for it. Uh, they, they, they were very happy with the, the, uh, first cycle of projects and, and the wide array of projects that they got out of it. In fact, in the cover letter, uh, to the CTC, uh, before, when they adopted the project, they pointed out this huge project in Southern California, and they pointed out in the cover letter, "My project named Covelo," because it also involved cooperation with the roundabout Indian tribes. And, and they liked that. So, uh, I, I think it's gonna be around for a while. They're already talking about what they're gonna be doing next year and what tweaks they're going to be making to the program.
Larry, you have, you have a question?
Yes. I really think that this is something that we ought to go for, and we ought to go for the, the whole thing. We also have some problems in that area of, that this trails with rails is, is gonna go through. And this is a chance to get it funded so that we can take care of these problems on railroad. And I just think for the safety, for the city of Willets, and for the people, for the recreation of Willets, and for the health of people of Willets, that this is an excellent opportunity, and it's not match. It's a hundred percent. And I just see really no, other than Rod and a few other peoples, a lot of time. And I, I know that, Rod. I'm sorry, but, uh, but, and I'm really not sorry, Rod, okay? But anyhow, uh, I just think that it's something that we really ought to go for and, and try it. Um, if it costs us, maybe something for, uh, a grant writer to pull everything together at the end. But I, I, for the amount of money that we can apply for, um, we could never come up with that kind of money to do the things that we need to do to make it work right. And so, I just think this is a real opportunity for us, and we're betting pretty well on all of the grants that we've applied for, and I just wanna keep it running. Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to open it up in the public here pretty quick. We got any further comment?
Just, just a couple of things that I am supportive and I'm willing to discuss where our priorities are and how this fits in, especially because the public access and trails was one of my priorities that got rank lower. Um, but I was also, I was a student at Bechtel, and I walked on the existing tracks, which is not what you're supposed to do, but all the kids do it. All the kids I've seen currently cross by the arch, which is incredibly dangerous. And, um, if we could improve that, I think it would, I think it would be, basically, people are sort of using these spaces ad hoc right now. They're walking on the tracks. You know, we don't have a lot of, um, sidewalk development there, so I think going this route, you know, would really benefit all of the residents down on Railroad Avenue. There's a lot of traffic that goes down there to the grocery store, not just the, not just the stores, so. Um, and I do think that, um, Yucaya has done a lot of the first challenges for us. I, I attended, uh, one of those NCRRA meetings where they're talking about the value of the ding-dinger. Or it wasn't even, it wasn't even one of those. It was the posts that could hold it, and the, the railroad feeling like they don't wanna move anything or change anything, because they're just not used to doing that. But Yucaya's worked through a lot of those hurdles, I think.
Well, I, as I said, it took some time, and I, I, I went to a number of those NCR meetings, explaining to them that since they don't, are not running a railroad, it would be nice to use the corridor for something useful.
Other than transient activity, yeah.
Isn't that, isn't that being done up in, in Arcata somewhere too?
They, they are pursuing it, and, and, uh, they have taken up the, uh, the baton from what Yucaya has done in working with the railroad, and they're, they're starting to get somewhere now. It's that, uh, is from, uh, uh, north of Eureka there to Arcata, that corridor along the bay there that they wanna pursue.
Yeah, the, the importance of the emphasis on the rails with trails is because...
Yes.
Not only is the railroad challenging to work with, but there's also a number of railroad enthusiasts that, you know, still believe heavily in, in the resource that we have here. And so, we need to make sure that they're supportive of this as adding to the assets that they have, rather than, you know, being threatened by it.
And, and, and the other thing to think about is, is maintenance. I mean, it, it will take some maintenance. It's, it, it does take some cost over time, and, but, you know, that would be a selling point to any negotiations with the, you know, with the railroads and the fact that, well, uh, you may have a fifty, sixty, eighty-foot, maybe a hundred-foot strip right of way here, but, you know, we need a, you know, sixteen-to-eighteen-to-twenty-foot corridor through here that we're gonna be responsible for maintaining for you. And removing, not only maintaining, but removing litter and weeds and all that other stuff, which is typically more than what they're doing.
Quite a bit more. Um, so I'd like to open up, any, any comments or questions of, Phil, or just comments on this from the community that'd like to address this? Come on up. Yes, we'd like you to come up.
Um, I'm Greta again, Greta Conny. Um, I just wanted to say, I think that this, um, fits in really nicely with all the other efforts we're making on, uh, post-bypass planning during your budget session last weekend. I think it was, um, I loved seeing in the paper that you had decided that post-bypass planning was a priority, the first priority. And to me, this is just right in there with that. If we had a lovely main street, as well as a, uh, parallel bicycle and pedestrian-friendly, um, pathway that could be utilized by the town people, by the kids, and by visitors, it's, it's a win for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Greta.
Lynn Kinley, Willets Chamber of Commerce. Um, I'd like to add exactly what Greta said, and I think it's very important for us to look at post-bypass and to look at the, um, especially our visitors, but also the quality of life that we have here. And I agree with everything you said, Larry.
Thank you.
Tom, man, I have a, I have a, a couple of questions. And one of the first ones was, uh, exactly that, the, the, the maintenance of the, of the system is something that would clearly have to be, uh, have to be addressed, because it'll be, it'll be a long-term liability if we're not careful. And it's easy to get excited about these things and move ahead at a hundred miles an hour. But having a look at, at this in the beginning would help, and there may be some funding mechanisms to that end, I don't know. And I was wondering if to support, uh, the financial efforts and the, uh, political, uh, aspects of this, if we do go to going all the way to the schools, we're actually not so far to tying right into the tribes. And there's could be an absolutely great funding source for us there to, uh, extend and maybe get some, a little more push from. I thought we should consider that.
I had made that note.
Any other, uh, comments out there? Well, I'll bring it back up here. I'd, I'd look for, uh, motions, if anybody cared to make one.
Um, what, well, one of the things that staff has required, has requested is, at Well, one of the things that staff has required, has requested is at least a discussion up here about where this is going to fit in our priorities. And I do think there's an argument to be made that this certainly is planning for post-bypass Willets, although I think the primary focus for that goal in the process was the 101 corridor. I mean, that was, and we're already making headway on that. It does seem like this is going to take a lot of staff time for a set designated period of time. But I was wanting to hear from Adrienne on her thoughts on, you know, their capability. Would we need to bring in additional, like grant-writing staff, for example? And do you see that as being feasible?
Well, as far as the grant-writing aspect of it, we had basically deferred that conversation to next Monday when we, when city staff again meets with MCOTG staff. One, we would know the outcome of tonight's meeting, and two, MCOTG will be, will have a better idea as to what's on their plate and how much they can help or not. So we certainly want to preserve the opportunity to bring in somebody to help with this. And we have two known resources that we've worked with recently. North Coast Opportunities has been a great partner, and Patty, correctly, if I'm wrong, but does Kathy Hopper work for you?
She's, you know, she's the private contractor.
Okay, so we could contract.
She works for me.
We could, we could pursue a contract with Kathy Hopper. We could also pursue a contract with local government commission. They're the folks out of Sacramento that helped along with Kathy Hopper on the planning grant that we were recently notified that we were awarded. So those are two options available to us. With regard to the engineering work that has to be done, I think I'd like to have Rod come up and talk directly about what he, what his take on that would be. Because this is a significant chunk of time. Granted, it's, it has to be accomplished over the next, you know, month or so to get this application done, but forty to sixty hours' worth of engineering time is quite a chunk of time for engineering.
I haven't had this specific conversation with the engineering staff to, to kind of figure out how much time we could put into this and what it's going to take us. Forty to sixty hours seems pretty reasonable, but we'd have to fit that in with everything else that's happening with Humboldt Street and the water line, emergency water supply, and everything that's happening at the sewer plant. But, you know, if that's what we want to do, then that's, we'll figure out how to make it happen. We'll work it in. That's about all I can say.
It would seem to me that a big part of that, I mean, I guess, is I, my mental picture of having to walk that track, you know, seems like if you're going to build a ten-foot road parallel to the track or adjacent to the track, it does, it impacts a lot of drainage. I mean, it's a drainage ditch. I mean, you're going to either have to bridge it or covert it, or, you know, I mean, it's...
Along Walnut?
Well, yes, certainly along Walnut, but even as you get, as you get, you know, in front of piers and along, I mean, railroads tend to be, you know, tend to be dams, and they, and on each side of them, generally, there's a drainage ditch. And so when you go to build ten feet out from it, you've got to create a structure, I mean, you've got to, you've got to deal with the drainage, and then you certainly have to deal with the environmental, you know, we, we remember when we wanted to do the Blosser Lane deal there, and they wanted a full-blown EIR on it. And then, you know, and then they also challenged us on the historical, the historical study of the railroad, looking for historical artifacts along there. I don't know, that whole thing is a bit daunting to me on the practical side, and that's where you come into it, is that, is that you, you have to deal with that, that practical side of it. And if this is supposed to be a set of, you know, construction drawings, then that's a, I mean, I, personally, I think it's more than we can, all we can do if we, if we stay within the NWP right-of-way. I mean, if we get in the skunk train thing at this point, first of all, you have no protocols in place to acquire the right-of-way from them. I believe that, I believe the skunk train now owns a right-of-way, but it could be that it's, I'm pretty sure they do, but it still may be leased from GP, was for a longest time. There's, I don't know, and the thing, I guess, the other one, point I wanted to bring up here is, in this rails to trails, and it's, comes up in this discussion every time, is the, is the connection between Brook Trails and the city. And, and I think we need to stay out of that. I don't think we want, I would not be supportive of that because that has private landowner rights in the middle of it, and we've started down that, or different entities have started down that path before, and I wouldn't want this thing to get sidetracked.
Are you talking about the historical rail bed?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to go there with this project.
So I don't think there's any, you know, there's no tracks there, no?
But it's, I think it is part of, it is, you know, it's conceptually part of our, of some trails plans that have circulated in the community over the years. And I'd want to make sure that we didn't tread into that zone on this. Larry?
I just think that this is a real opportunity for us to get our community on the map, and being downtown, I don't know how many times that we have personally in our store or come out to people that have, and I'll just use it as an example, of people that have animals in their cars. And to tell them that there's a dog park that is just down the street a little ways, and they had no idea that that was there. And I just think that that's a bonus for us, for people to stop in our community, and if they can get out of their car, and I think every twentieth car that goes through this town has bikes on the back of it. And if they could stop and let their dogs out and let them run around the dog park while they're there, not just to get on the bike and go. And I'm just saying, and do all of these things at one time in one community is a real asset. And I think it's something that we have to look at as a community of how we want people to come in here, spend a night or spend a day, go to the restaurants, look at over the community and whatever, and these are two real positive things to make those things happen, in my estimation. And plus, the health of the community. If you could, if you could get on a trail and walk all the way from, let's say, Commercial, go from Commercial, and I want it to go all the way to the high school, but I'm just saying, I'm not going to go down to the high school and walk the whole thing. I'm going to go to the Commercial Street and then down. And I just think that would be an asset for our senior citizens. When I get there, I will want to do that. And I'm just saying that I just think it's an asset. I just see nothing other than Rod's time and the staff's time, and that's a negative. But other than that, everything else is positive, in my estimation. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
I would like to make it a motion. Yes.
I'd like to move this along.
I'd be happy to, second.
So this is for the expanded project area, just to clarify, or no?
After that, the maker of the motion.
What's that?
What's the scope of your motion?
I would like it to go, I would really like to go to Bechtel Grove, if not any further, because there is a way to go through to Bechtel Grove and go across Bechtel Grove's field, and there is a path at the south end of Bechtel Grove that goes to Blosser Lane School. That's a dedicated piece that goes through, through the housing project. And if nothing more, if it went to Bechtel Grove School, I mean, I would like it to go farther, but Bechtel Grove would be as good as I could ask for probably at this time, and it'd go all the way from, from the hospital all the way to the high school. Does that kind of answer your questions?
Yeah, I think it does. Maggio, Tom?
Yeah. What concerns me is, I mean, I'm very supportive of the whole project, and the expanded part of it to serve the schools, I think, is really wonderful. And there's a very short time to do all this, and the engineering challenges as well as staff time. So I'm a little concerned, and I think, you know, despite my philosophical support for it, I feel like some of it could wait till next year, given how fast we're going to have to move to get an application in and have a good chance of getting that through all the hoops. So I, I would argue for just doing the one that's already included in the plan and then planning to, because I think just, you know, setting up public comment meetings is already a big deal. I mean, you've got to go through some hoops to do that. Maybe, you know, Adrienne and Phil could speak to that, but what I heard from Phil is sort of like, I feel like it's already a pretty ambitious project to run, run, and get a project that's already planned in by June 1st. So I'm, you know, I'm ambivalent. I'm torn because I'd like to do everything.
I would just clarify that we're not doing actual engineering right now. We're just, we're kind of doing preliminary feasibility, and we're coming up with a cost estimate. The engineering comes down the road after, after the environmental studies have been completed.
There's the public involvement, and there's also the dealing with the skunk train as a different entity than NCRRA. So it's a fairly ambitious thing to do, and that I...
I just wanted to add two brief things. One is when we're talking about our priorities, I would imagine this would come before Humboldt Street temporarily, you know, Humboldt Street planning, like after the emergency water project, which is kind of underway.
I don't think we can do that.
Well, but you were asking for some guidance as to where, where you would want the priorities, and so that's where I would see it. And I did just want to add one other thing, which is that we, the kind of first Willets Trail, the one on, at Hale Creek, is, from all accounts, busy. I am hearing so many reports of people seeing their neighbors out there, and now I know someone who lives next to it, and they're seeing people on that trail all the time. So I have no doubt that if this facility was built, it would be used extensively.
We need a traffic light on that trail now.
Alan, I...
Can I address the motion?
Sure. You kind of have kind of, you kind of have expertise, staff.
I'm just wondering, I know that this western extension is a bit problematic to get handled around, and we were even talking earlier that there's some things with that that we're not even sure, you know, how difficult that's going to be. And I was just wondering if you could craft the motion such that you would give staff the ability to decide whether or not that we, that could be included or not. As we get into the discussion, more and more, we're finding out there's more and more things about that that might need additional work, and it just may be too difficult. And if you could give Adrienne the direction that if at some point when we're crafting this application, that becomes just obvious that that's just too much to take on, it could be dropped out of the process and just go with the, with the north-south piece. I think that would be one way to possibly take a look at that.
Thank you, Alan.
I would, I would move that, that staff has the latitude to be able to figure in whether they have the time and whatever it takes to do the skunk train part of it. But I definitely want it from the, from the hospital all the way to the high school.
Adrienne, you?
Yeah, I wanted to just respond to a few things, and Alan commented on one of those things about just making sure that at the staff level, as we move forward, we can make those determinations accordingly. I think that we're talking about one community forum that we would have to hold for this expanded project area, and so that's manageable. And, gosh, I'm losing the, oh, Caltrans is the other, so skunk train and Caltrans are two entities that we would have to deal with as part of this expanded area going westward.
Okay.
That's a second, or I'm fine with the flexibility for staff.
Call the vote, please.
Yes, Councilmember Strasby.
Yes.
Strong.
Glad with the amendment, so yes.
Magical.
Yes.
Warenstein.
Yep.
Mayor Larden.
Sure. Thanks for coming up, Phil. Appreciate it. See whether we can, see if we can, if we're up to the task.
See if we can get it out together.
Yeah.
Is there a short timeframe?
Yeah, it is.
Come up with something.
Thank you very much for coming. Just wanted to comment. Regarding Humboldt Street, we just had our pre-bid conference today, so that timeline has been set in motion.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're, we cannot let this interrupt the emergency water supply for Humboldt Street.
I have some.
This can, this can replace what we've been putting into Brook Trails.
Just on behalf of the chamber, I wanted to say that we will help put on the public.
Thank you.
We will up our score later weekend if that happens.
Good, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item B under Public Matters, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Governor's Executive Order Implementing Statewide Mandatory Water Allowment. What's, what's going on with Uncle Jerry?
All right, I think as most of you are aware, hopefully all of you are aware, last week on April 1st, and it was not an April Fool's joke, Governor Brown issued an executive order mandating statewide reductions in water use by twenty-five percent. Information is still forthcoming. Basically, he issued this mandate to the Water Board to enforce. So in the order, if you've read it, and I think I attached it, it references urban water systems. Willets is not an urban water system. We have under three thousand connections, and I think the threshold might actually be eight thousand connections. It also references groundwater management system, GEMS, G-E-M-E-M-S is the acronym for that. And that really has to do with medium and large-size basins, and again, we're not at that threshold. However, we're certain that there are going to be some sort of implications to smaller communities such as Willets, and so those have not yet been clarified. There's been, I mean, we're sort of contemplating some possible scenarios, and there could be a twenty-five percent reduction that's mandated to Willets, and if so, it looks like it would be based on 2013 usage. There are a number of programs that he's going to be rolling out, or the Water Board will be rolling out, with regard to funding opportunities for some home improvements, you know, for low-flow devices, things of that nature. Consumer rebate program to replace old appliances with water and energy-efficient models, prohibiting new homes and developments from irrigating with potable water, unless it's a water-efficient device, and banning watering of ornamental grass on public street mediums. So these are things that we feel that we would have to comply with, even as a smaller It talks about adjusting a rate structure to implement a conservation program or pricing program, and that's something that we would have to study further and come up with some sort of...
Rod, could you tell me how we stand in our reservoirs right now?
We're at twelve hundred acre feet. We're up from January 1st, we're about fifteen, I think. We've been holding pretty steady, we're doing, we're doing good.
Are we, are we overflowing?
Uh, not yet.
After this last one?
Not yet. Should be, we should be, hopefully, soon. I mean, thirteen hundred is our max, we're pulling, so we came on forty last week.
Thank you.
So this was just really an informational item. We thought, we weren't sure if there would be something prior to tonight's meeting that we would need to bring forward for action. The county is also looking, looking at all of the water agencies within the county. They did send out an inquiry to all of us, asking if we still had our emergency drought declaration in place, which we let lapse back in January, I believe it was, so I've communicated that back to them. We are still currently under... We are still currently under stage one largely voluntary water conservation measure. Back in October, we implemented a couple of state mandates at that time, but the stage one went into effect last April.
Yes.
So just a couple of things. It seems like we have already put in place water conserv, you know, or especially since we just redid our whole ordinance, it seems like we're in a reasonable position to say that we have done that, you know, to maybe highlight it again for regulatory agencies. But the fact is, we have made progress in that area. I am getting questions from the community about this, you know, how Willets is being affected. I had a charity group ask if they should have, they were planning a plant sale and didn't know if, you know, they should do that. And I let, I've been letting everyone know that we're actually in much better shape than we were at the same time, you know, last year. As far as, this is how we generally go, is late spring rains carry us through the summer and that's, that's our, been our cycle. And what was really scary is when we had the February and the March with dry reservoirs. However, I still urge people to be conscious of the water they're using and to conserve what they can. You know, so I'm telling people that we're doing much better, but, and we'll certainly be addressing the Governor's Executive Order, but the fact is, is that we're kind of okay. We should be conserving, but we're kind of okay. And the other thing I was wondering about is just sort of trying to think ahead for this is maybe planning, because I was thinking, you know what, grass medians do we have? We don't really have grass medians, but we have the park on Highway 20. It seems like we could certainly cut, you know, fall, you know, the city could voluntarily cut the water usage on that. I know that the fountain recycles water, but I do know that there, you know, there's must be some water loss. This is the Batcock Park Fountain.
Right. And that gets refilled with the park well water.
Okay. So, yeah, and making sure that people know that, you know, the ball fields, the Rhett Grove are watered with park well water that is not potable water, making sure that's well known in the community.
Any other comments with this? This is a non-action item. I'm sure that we have an extensive discussion sometime when it needs to be one, an action item.
I just wanted to mention both our local ordinance, but also at the state level, you know, if we, we as cities can comment on that. To be careful about this, across the board, it's 25% less than last year because last year we were really-
It sounds like it was two years.
Yeah, or, well, any, you know, anytime you take a fixed year, it also hurts people that just have been conservation-minded all along. So, but in our, in ours, I think it said from a previous year, so especially in multi-year drought, we should just make sure that there's some flexibility to take that into account and not, you know, not expect people that have been massively conserving to cut another 25%. That's all.
Yeah, Rod?
Yeah, we, well, the county is tackling this. It's mostly, it's this plus the new, the three new laws that were passed by the legislature for sustainable groundwater basins. And as was mentioned, Little Lake Valley is not one of them because we're a small or a very small basin. But I attended this workshop with the idea of working with the county to develop some kind of a plan to get ahead of the curve, to do something about sustainable water in the Little Lake Valley. And I think it would be good, I got a kind of a, I got a good reception from Carrie Brown, she's chairman of the board this year, and she put me in touch with the third district supervisor and we had a good conversation. But I'm not getting a lot of, you know, the idea that it's going to be some action taken. I'm thinking it might work if we, if the council took some sort of resolution, for example, some sort of an action, official action, to move forward with some sort of an arrangement.
Any other comments? Okay, let's move along. An update on the emergency water supply project. Long as we're on water.
I would, I would, I think what I read was the 25% reduction over 2013 numbers and last year we were at 20% overall for the year. So it wouldn't be a far stretch to get to 25 much. Maybe if we just didn't water the Highway 20 park, we, that might do it. So, for the groundwater treatment plant, we are, for the emergency water supply, the groundwater treatment plant building was completed last Monday and we had some other things that came up that slowed us down a little bit to get started over there, but we should be started working on the inside next week after we're done out on Main Street and we get some things squared away at the water treatment plant. I wouldn't call it a setback, but we did lose our, our driller, our well driller today. So we're going to have to find a new, somebody else to drill our well and hopefully that won't, won't take us long and we still have a couple of months before we need to drill it, but, so that's, that's all we have right now.
Okay, questions?
Which category are you on?
We're going to the consent calendar now. So we're going to the consent calendar, which is the minutes of the meetings plus we're including the added item to our agenda, which is-
I saw move for that.
Ratification of that settlement.
Ratification, settlement agreement will be item 4B. So I have a motion for approval consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any comments in the public on the consent calendar? Have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Warrenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. And that does conclude the, I think the final touch, right, that the cases were dismissed yesterday.
Cases were dismissed. The Medesino action case was dismissed. Mr. Neary gave me a copy of the dismissal this afternoon. Sedoma County matters were dismissed yesterday. The settlement agreement's been fully signed by all sides. It's a done deal. So we really have no business needing a closed session.
Well, we are, we are nixing that from the agenda.
Oh, gosh.
That's the only one on there, too. Good. So, right to appeal. Persons are dissatisfied, the decision of city council may have a right to review that decision by court. The city's adopted 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, within the time which decision of city boards and agencies may be judicially So now we'll recap this council's goal-setting workshop that we just blew into smithereens tonight.
I put this on here because we have the final document from Bill Stettler and Michael Tari, who were here with us on Saturday, the 28th. And so many of you were there at that workshop. The number one major city goal was planning for post-bypass Willets. And the second top goal was water, basically water, water security, water supply, infrastructure and conservation. And Brown's corner intersection improvements were the third item in the top city goals. But I want to say that the two top city goals, the post-bypass planning and the water or water system, each incorporate many projects. And we did this for a reason, to really kind of keep an eye on the big picture. And so, for example, planning for post-bypass includes the, you know, we just got the planning grant for Main Street planning in its entirety. And we have a grant application out there that we're waiting here back on for downtown streets and alleyways. And, you know, as of tonight, we got direction to apply for this Rails with Trails project. And so these are all related to what, how we're going to survive after Main Street and hopefully to ensure the economic vitality of our, of our businesses. Brown's corner is, it was kind of pulled out as a separate project, but it is really part of the overall scheme of things and, but it's something that, because it's not in our jurisdiction, it's Caltrans jurisdiction and will remain so, they're the ones that are the big dog in that regard and we need to just keep putting some pressure on them to get some traction on some traffic safety improvements there. Under water, you guys here are well aware, we have the emergency water, groundwater project that is almost complete. I think June is the target date. Is that right, Rod?
July 31st.
July 31st. Main Street water line, if you haven't noticed, is going on as we, well, maybe not as we speak, but that's been going on for the last couple of days and I think tonight is when they're doing the crossing of Main Street. And so just an advisory there that that is going to stir up the water and we will probably end up with some brown water again. So Rod might comment more, more about that. I guess the main point I want to make with this is, is these council goals serve as a roadmap for going forward, at least for the next couple of years. And it's important that we all remain focused on what these priorities are. It directs city staff's work and if there's some new need that arises, as, as was the case with the drought and coming up with an emergency water supply project, that we need to continue to revisit these. And so going forward, we will be giving quarterly updates on how we're doing with the projects and if we need to make revisions to them, we can. As we go forward in our budget process, which here we are in April, next month is when we'll be going into a budget workshop, probably the third week or so, staff will be presenting work plans for some of these bigger projects to discuss at the budget workshop and making sure that we're on the same page with what our needs are, what our goals are and what the resources are.
Thanks, Adrian. Yeah, clearly to me, as Larry or Matt said, I think that this Rails to Trails, Rails and Trails project fits into the, under that heading very well of a post-bypass community. So, no, it's, it's not a project that intersects Main Street much. I think it is, it is about making our community.
Yep.
And it's what, you know, we've really been hoping that we could be doing with some of our time that we won't be doing. I say that somewhat facetiously earlier, but really seriously, the amount of hours that we've had staff committed to another, this would be a much more rewarding place to spend some time. So we will move on to department recommendations.
Was there others?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, other verbal?
Yes, I do have some verbal reports.
Okay.
And just to piggyback on the comments you just made, Bruce, we have had an incredible amount of staff time devoted to resolving the Brook Trails matter. And so I can speak on behalf of all staff, we are so excited to have that behind us and be able to refocus on all the projects that essentially have been ignored for some time and, not just projects, but just a lot of different matters that have really been ignored, including just, I mean, I feel like I haven't been out in the community as much, sort of tending to those relationships. So we're pretty excited to, to look forward. So keeping in with that theme on a, let's see, upcoming agendas, I wanted to just let you know what's on the horizon. At the April 22nd council meeting, the LAFCO executive director will be here to engage in a discussion with the council on steering force so we can move forward with that process. We anticipate having solid waste of Willets franchise agreement back on the 22nd for possible action. And you're going to hear a report out tonight under committee reports. And somewhere, I don't know if it has to be at a regular council meeting or separate from this, I'll get clarity on that in the next couple of days, but this public review forum that we need to conduct as part of this grant application, that'll occur sometime in the next three weeks or so. Then at the May 13th meeting, we will be holding a public hearing for the medical office building financing request where they, they're asking the city to serve as a conduit in their financing package. And that will likely be in the form of certificates of participation. Obviously, because we're a public entity, we have to hold a public hearing about that and that requires some noticing. So we've slated that for May 13th. And we also expect to have something back on the solar array project on May 13th. And I know that there's something, some other public hearing that I am overlooking that I think was scheduled for May 13th, but that could be the fee hearing. Is that May 13th or the 20? Okay. So our annual fee hearing would be coming before you on May 13th. Lastly, we need to designate a new city rep to the library advisory board. It's been Kristen Frazier for the last several years. Okay. And Mark Comer sent me an email the other day, just making sure I was aware of it. So we'd like to, you know, if there's any interested parties in the community and we'll get this out in some form to solicit some applications for that.
Good.
Can I take a big poll?
Sure.
I appreciate having the discussion about the Rails to Trails project, especially because I was hearing about it in the community and I wasn't really up on what, you know, what we were doing moving forward. And it reminds me that we, I haven't been, haven't had time to craft a policy with, a policy for how things get brought forward to the council. And I know you and I have talked about it, but I think that that would be something that would be good to move forward. Other communities have a thing where if it's going to take more than X amount of staff time, you know, it needs to come before the council so that you don't get staff working on projects that, you know, that we're not supportive of as a group. So I know there's been so many other things on your plate, but I think that, including if we want to discuss how we bring items forward from the city council, that it not just be one person, but maybe have, you know, have two council members, we need to be on board before it becomes an agenda item, I think that would be a good conversation to have.
I agree.
Okay. Some new public comments? That's right. No? Okay. Anything from the city clerk?
Not at this time.
Finance?
Office of the Attorney.
Sure.
Hi. I wanted to let you know that, yes, you have your basic financial statements and your management report that is hot off the press. I gave it to you in advance, it's not on the agenda, it's not anything. I just want you to be able to look at it and if you have any questions, if you could let me know, see if we need to have the auditor come back for the next meeting to make a presentation or if, if there are things that we can work through.
And Suzie, it'll be on the next agenda for formal acceptance of it, correct?
It absolutely will be on the consent calendar for next.
We have to actually read it before that, right?
Yeah, that's right.
We'll be able to in a second meeting.
Yes. Yes.
Good. Thank you. You bet. Regal?
Just update, Adrian has told me that one of the priorities now is to enter into a lease agreement with Reach. And I have found some sample ground lease agreements from other municipal airports that look like a good template to use. And so I'll be talking with Adrian more about that and perhaps what we'll do is send a couple of copies of these template agreements to Reach and get some feedback from them.
Great.
Good, good. Public Safety and I see no community developed, Public Works. Anything more from Public Works, Rod?
Public Works crew worked with the water department last week to fix a pretty, a leak on Bechtel Road on our 14-inch main that comes from the 3 million gallon tank. So it was a pretty significant repair, I would say, that took a few days to work out and that, that set us back on the Main Street job, which set us back a little bit on the groundwater treatment plant. Because once they're- groundwater treatment plant, because once they're done with, once the Public Works crew is done with the Main Street water line, they're going to move over to the groundwater treatment plant, and under the, under the guidance and supervision of Scott Herman and Steve Anderson will consult a little bit on the project. We'll get that, most of that done in-house. Other than that, Adrian mentioned.
Rod, could you just remind everybody how many actual bodies you have working on these projects?
How many actual?
Bodies?
We had four today, three, three and a half, I guess, because we had one guy go in and out, he had to mow the grass, and then go back over and, or clean the bathrooms, I don't remember what he was doing. We had one guy out sick. So, as Adrian mentioned, we had the pre-construction meeting for the Humboldt Street rehabilitation project, which is scheduled to start June 2nd, and we had five or six companies, construction companies here.
Got a question. It just occurred to me, as part of the Humboldt Street project, you're going to redo the alleyways across the street.
Correct.
Will that be closing the parking lot as well?
At some point, yeah, we're going to probably have to close it. It won't be for an extended amount of time, because we'll be able to grind it, we'll be able to grind it and run through there in an hour, maybe, and then pave it and roll it, and, you know, it could take a couple hours to pave the whole thing, and before we could put traffic back on it at some, we'll figure something out. It's going to take a little coordination.
A minor inconvenience for a great lifetime of improvement.
Absolutely.
Figure it out.
I have one more question, more about the water system, but since you're standing there, I was looking through the warrants, and I noticed, as usual, a lease payment for the SolarB equipment, and is that still on lease? I mean, I thought it was like a two-year or something. There was an end to it, that we were going to convert it to a purchase. Is that, where do you stay on that?
You know, I don't know the specifics. I was just talking to Steve about that today. I don't know the specifics on the lease agreement and when it becomes ownership. There are some concerns over what value they bring to this, to the water system for the costs that we're paying, so something we need to scrutinize.
Are you going to, is Humboldt Street going to be done before the 4th of July? Seeing impact, the 4th of July parade, gathering and all that, then?
It will not be done before the 4th of July, but.
Will you take, have them take a few days off? I don't really know what day the 4th of July happens.
It's a Friday.
That's what I'd hope.
I think it's like a Saturday.
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 Okay. It's not, yeah, it won't be, I think it's a 60-day contract.
Okay.
60-day construction period.
It seems like most of the staging is on this end of Humboldt. I mean, it's, we're thinking about.
You might try and see about keeping the, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
You'll know, you'll know that.
We'll have something, some temporary pedestrian.
Take, do something for, get the equipment out of the way and stuff for the 3rd, the 4th.
Yeah, in the beginning, there won't be much, much equipment, because it's all sidewalk, curb, and gutter to start, and that'll be, you know, tear it out and form it up and pour it back, so there may be no impact to the 4th of July, other than ground pavement, grinded pavement, however you want to.
That's fine.
There's a lot more going on that we don't need to talk about tonight.
Good. Thanks, Rod. Councilmember and committee reports, MCOG?
Yes. We met Monday, and we had the new member from UKIA that has joined us now, and we approved the Phase 2, or Cycle 2, excuse me, of the action plan for walkability for Boonville, and it's only a mile long, but it's right in the middle of Boonville. The second one was the final approval of the Round Valley Indian Tribe Trails and All-Purpose Trails, and that was approved, and a draft for the funding mechanism, now that we're trying to get it all put together with having to break the two apart into two segments, one Phil Dell has and Bates is the other one, and so we're trying to get that funding straightened up, and this was the first segment on doing that, and that was essentially it. An interesting thing came up, and mine will bring it up now, I guess, is that when Willets gets the Highway 101, which becomes whatever it's going to become, we need to really consider what we want to do as a city for the amount of time that the stoplights work, since we have absolutely no history or anything on the stoplights on Commercial Street and the one down at the high school. And it was talked about that and mentioned that maybe we need to make a section on people making turns, left-hand turns on, and I'll just use, for example, from Commercial Street on to 101, that they have a delay so that the pedestrians will have a little better chance to get out without having to look at, you know, who's the car that's going to get them. And that is really something that I really had not thought about, and, but I think that we really need to start considering these types of things, because it's a short amount of time, you know, it seems like a couple of, two or three years, but it's going to go really fast. And that was the first inkling of that, and I just, you know, I just think that that's something that we need to look at. Thank you, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. MTA? Oh, excuse me, LAFCO?
LAFCO met. Actually, served on it with Jerry, so he probably has a better reputation than I do. We're starting to go through the budget process, and it looks like there's going to be some sort of reduction of member agencies dues, which is broadly supported, but what's in discussion now is what that's going to look like and over what time period. So, we should have more information on that coming right up. And there, I know there was a number of other things that we discussed, but of course, I can't think of it at the moment. We're still doing the fire department and SRS.
Okay. MSWA?
MSWA hasn't met since the last council meeting.
I'll get back to it. I'm doing these things in my own dyslexic way.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't think of one other thing.
That's all right, you're going. We're doing it.
It's a good thing, though. It's important. One of the things, I was thinking that we talked about something for a long time, and it was the exclusive operating agreement for emergency services ambulance usage, because we're talking about the fire departments, and a lot of them are having challenges with ambulance care and their reimbursement rate. So, we talked quite a bit about that, and that we're going to get a summary from the county on where they're at in that process, because I know it has, it's of interest to our fire department, as well as, you know, the air ambulance folks and other people. So, we'll have more information coming.
At least a 30-year issue that I know about.
Yeah.
Madge, I'm sorry, do you want to give us a MTA report?
MTA, I believe they met two weeks ago, and I was out of town, so I haven't got.
Buses are still running, I think, so.
They are still running.
EDFC?
They are meeting tomorrow, and I will be attending that, and I've reported before that very exciting new direct public offering that allows investors to invest in our local businesses through EDFC. It's real.
Okay. New California cities.
Did not meet.
Wastewater and freshwater did not meet. REBI did?
I was thinking that we maybe should remove that, but then Adrian was saying that it might be more beneficial to, at some point down the line, fold in the Main Street committee into that. You know, have that be the one, you know, once we're done, once we're done with the grant, but.
We'll leave it on there.
It's fallow currently.
Finance did not meet. Ad-hoc, Caltrans bypass has not met?
No.
We should get together in our space.
Solid Waste franchise.
All right, Solid Waste, we did meet on April 1st, and basically, we went over the list that the council went over at our last meeting, and all of your comments were incorporated into this. We presented them, discussed them with Jerry Ward, and we pretty much, I would say 98%, you know, came to agreement on just about everything. There's a few modern things that need to be tweaked, and as Adrian mentioned, that we're hoping, and I believe that Jerry and Mike Sweeney are getting together to craft a new agreement that we'll have, hopefully, before the 23rd, so that we can, you know, bring it forward for ratification and discussion.
Okay. Yeah, Mike, come on up. I do need to be a little bit careful here. This is an ad hoc committee report, and we're not going to go in an extensive discussion on Solid Waste this evening, but to the extent you can elaborate on Mike's, I mean.
Well, if I may, I mean, if you are open to a few minutes of input on this.
I'm open to a couple.
Okay. I am also very hopeful that all the issues have been resolved or will be resolved when we get down to detailed text, which is, you know, sometimes the devil.
You did, I sent you the copy, right?
Yes. Okay, so you're. And I did see some, I was unfortunately unable to be at the specific meeting you had, but I've seen the follow-up, and I've seen Jerry Ward's notes on a couple of points. And I wanted to, and you may also, I assume you've all seen that also, and I wanted to address the issue of, well, do we know what the accepted, list of acceptable items is to a mixed organics cart? I mean, is there some kind of uncertainty here, or some unresolved issues that need to be nailed down? And Solid Waste of Willets very properly expressed the wish that, well, it would be good if there was uniformity throughout the county, so if people move from one community to another, they are still going to be conforming with the, with the same policy. And I wanted to give you some assurance on that point. I have here the flyer that is used, or was used by Fort Bragg through Empire Waste Management. When their program was introduced several years ago, that lists what could be added to the green yard waste cart, basically food waste and food soil paper. And this is, incidentally, essentially identical to what is used by Portland, Seattle, and the other major jurisdictions that have been pioneers in this area. And then also the yard waste. So, this is, has been in effect in the unincorporated area that is under the Empire Waste Management contract, and in the city of Fort Bragg. As I've told you previous, it has been essentially a problem-free program. There is no controversy that I'm aware of about what is in the acceptable list of inputs. It's the same as what's being used successfully by the major jurisdictions, and in discussions, I've had some discussions with Martin Millick of Cold Creek Compost. He is in agreement that what he is now providing to Fort Bragg and the unincorporated county would naturally be appropriate and acceptable and agreeable for Willets. So, I don't really think there's a problem here, and I hope you agree, and I'll be taking that position forward on your behalf unless I'm told otherwise.
Mike, there, I just looked at this, the items that are not accepted in the yard waste cart, and some of them have been listed as being acceptable at Cold Creek's compost.
Cold Creek Compost is willing to accept some additional items, in particular, cat litter and animal waste. However, it was not agreed by Empire Waste Management when we initiated the program there to include that, as advertised to the public.
Okay.
And I did some more research, and Portland and Seattle and the other major jurisdictions have the same policy.
They don't include that.
They do not include that. As Martin Millick, we have a tremendous asset in him, is because he is a demon composter, and he has proven that anything from a blue whale down to dog feces or cat litter can be successfully composted under the way he operates. But there are other considerations, as I'm sure you can imagine, with what list we put out. So, my recommendation is that we stick with what we have at this time, and because it's what we have, it's what large section of the county is used to, and a solid waste of Willets concern is uniformity. I think we better, for the time being, stick with what we have in place.
So, what do you see as the process? You are making up this list, and somehow, and then you're also working with Jerry to craft the agreement?
Well, on your behalf, if it's your wish, I'm ready to sit down. Jerry has expressed the agreement to work with as the basis for a new contract, the standard agreement we already have in Fort Bragg and the county areas, this proven comprehensive agreement, and we'll adapt that to what has been agreed to in the memo you have and work up the appropriate precise language to put that in place.
And when, when could I see it, and the committee?
Well, I'm ready to go, and as soon as we can get to work on it, I think it should be a fairly straightforward process.
Okay.
I'd like to have Jim Lance review it prior.
Yeah, absolutely, before it comes to the council. So, if we could get it next week, is that doable?
On my part, it is. I mean, when we sit down, as I said earlier, sometimes the devil is in the details, but if there are any problems remaining, you know, disagreements, they should be brought out and brought forward to you.
So, are we, we, the ad hoc committee, turning over the negotiations of this contract?
No, no. They're going by the terms that we agreed to, that is documented, and I sent copies of this to Mike and Jerry, and Jerry made his further comments, and we updated that. But this is, this is our position, and this is what, this is what's going to be. Basically, what you're doing is doing some wordsmithing, I would think. You're not changing any conditions or anything.
No, I don't anticipate, absolutely, what you have in your memo is the starting point, but there are, there's all kinds of other things in a contract that we have to, it has to be in black and white.
Right, exactly. But, I mean, these have been identified as being the items that need to be discussed. Everything else is kind of.
Well, I'm a little uncomfortable, us going to a third party for the.
Well, you know, my original.
Not being, not being, participating, because that, I mean, obviously, it's going to come back to the city, and we'll have a chance to review and decide whether we're going to go forward with it or not. But having just gone through a fairly exhaustive process in wordsmithing a document, I can, there's, the details are not to be overlooked.
No.
And our interests in those, I think, are best served if we're at the table when that's being done, as opposed to trying to address it post-ASB. I mean, your ad hoc committee, if that's the direction you guys want to go, then I'll.
Well, you know, it was my intention to, you know, to do it internally and have Jim Lance review it. Mike offered it, and he is our county expert, and if we can get to review it next week to make sure that everything that we want is in there and is worded that way, then, you know, it saves us a little bit of time, I think.
You're driving the ship on this one. Yes, Larry? I'm sorry, I'm not sure if we had the hand up.
The thing that I would like, and this is a pretty lengthy item, and it's a 15-year item, I would like to have more than like three or four days to go over it. I would like to have, you know, maybe, if we're going to vote on it, to have a week or so to actually sit down and read it and digest it and read it again and whatever, because this is our shot, and we want to have it so that we all understand it, so that we can call you or whoever we need to call and ask questions if we have any questions.
How about if we do it this way? If we aim to have the document for the next council meeting on the 23rd, you present it to the council, you then review it, and you have until the next meeting. it to the council, you then review it, and you have until the next meeting to act on it.
Okay, that would be two weeks? That would be good.
Is that?
I'm fine with it. Madge?
Yeah, in order to have a report or a draft document in front of the council on the 22nd, I think Adrian would like to have it early in the coming week. So I would just urge you to get a draft together and have Ron and I and Adrian and then also Jim Lance have a chance to review it next week, so that it can go out in the packet at the end of that week, end of next week.
Are you available to meet those timelines, Jerry?
When's the first meeting in May?
May 13.
But I, I would sure like to see us have the document basically ready, because, you know, I, I'm confident, and I am confident also that, that we have addressed the direction that the city council gave us last meeting. And, you know, there's just the fine points of getting it all in black and white, I think is important to follow through on, but I think we've really done our job.
Well, I like the idea that Larry brought up and Ron supported, and staff seems to support, that it'll be introduced and discussed. And if we, if we're not getting it until Sunday night or-
I want us to get it Friday.
Friday night or Monday morning, then it might be unrealistic to push. I mean, we can, we can address it at the time, but you might be prepared to expect someone may ask for an extension of review period, so. All right, thank you.
Can you keep me in the loop for maybe sending it now?
Yes, sir. Solar Array Project?
We met yesterday, we received a, I guess it's a little bit more than a preliminary proposal. It's, well, it's still, it's not the final. We took a tour of the, the site, which would be potentially just north of the skate park. And there's still some work to be done, some questions to be answered and information. And we're hoping that, what did we say, Mark, the May 13th? That at the May 13th meeting, we'll have something to bring back for consideration by the council.
Okay. Main Street improvements, I think, were-
Did not meet. We're actually meeting tomorrow night at 4:00 PM, the Main Street Ad-Hoc Committee.
That's right, we are.
And, if I may.
It's Thursday night at 4:00?
4:00 PM, here in Chambers tomorrow, Thursday. And I was going to suggest that we move the matters that the Main Street Committee has been addressing into the Re-vide Ed going forward, because obviously, ad hoc committee meetings are supposed to be limited duration, single purpose, and we've now tackled a number of things.
What do you think about waiting till after the planning grant? It seems that's so focused in that committee.
Well, I don't think we need, we'll, we'll keep that on our radar. Center for the Arts, we've got-
Nothing to report there, there hasn't been enough, there's not enough hours in the day.
Put that one in. Okay, council member reports and recommendations.
I have something that I'm going to pass over to Jim. The idea of a blight tax was brought up at our goal setting.
A blight tax?
Which, I'm not saying that we're interested in that, but there are some properties that are historically blighted. And this is some information on health and safety receiverships-
Okay.
-that I just think would be worthwhile to look at.
I, I received one of these a year ago, my item here under this is, and, and I don't know that it's completely a scam, but there's this letter floating around that, letters to inform you that as a homeowner, you're responsible for the full cost of repairing your exterior, exterior waterline. And then it identifies your property as, and anyway, it's a company that's trying to sell insurance on your waterline. And, and I think it's-
It's misleading.
It's very misleading. It kind of, it comes in as, well, here it is, other than, in fact, I've doodled on it, which I have a bad way of doing. But anyway, I just, I'd have people look at it fairly cautious, and I'll pass it down to Jim. But, you know, it's trying to get people to pay six, eight bucks a month forever to, to buy an insurance policy on your waterline between your meter and your house. I mean, it's-
This is a reminder to me also, that, speaking of lateral lines, you know, we have an obligation under our order to watch settlement to put together a loan program for repair of levels.
We'll look at that in the budget process.
And Suzie's been working on that.
Maybe we can sell insurance.
Bruce?
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank Rod and Suzie and Adrian and Bruce and Jim for their work on the brick trails agreement. And I know that it was over and beyond. This last weekend was definitely over and beyond the call of duty. And I just want to know, want you to all know that I really appreciate it, and, and I'm sure the rest of the council and the people in Willetts appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you, you know, it has been something that the community seems relieved to have-
Definitely.
To have over. And, and, you know, so I'm, I know more than everybody else. And Larry, thank you for your efforts that day of mediation, too.
Well, thank you.
But not just even since mediation, you know, you would think that there wouldn't be more to do, but there really, really has been.
Yeah. Worked out, worked out right according to everybody's step to the plate, it worked out No ordinance, any good in welfare?
I have welfare, it's not good. Comment into welfare. Larry, you brought up earlier about left turns from Commercial Street. Jim and I were walking back to City Hall tonight for the meeting and nearly got taken out by a truck.
Hope it wasn't mine of mine.
No, it's a bad, it's a bad corner. And, and we had an accident there, what, a week ago or so on a Friday?
Well, I'll tell you, you've got to, I don't know what time of year it is, but it may be getting close. There is a time when the sun sets right on West Commercial Street, I mean, just dead right in your eyes.
And you're told to cross when people are going.
And that's a tough time. And a good in welfare, you know, you, you spoke, Larry, and I just want to, at this point, say publicly that, you know, I worked with Rick Williams on this, quite, quite a bit, on this settlement and this finalizing it. And Rick is a, a stand-up guy. He's, he's good to his word, and we had built a lot of confidence to be working with him in this process. He, I had a lot of respect for the way he approached the, this final settlement. So I wanted to give him a little, a little recognition from the city. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.